Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 10th meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee. I would ask that you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We will do the introductions and we'll start with the lady in the front. Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Karen Vernon, Millville.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Carrie Godett, Blackstone.
Jane Reggio, Millville.
Jack Keefe, Blackstone.
Sarah Larkin, Millville.
Matt Ernworth, Assistant Superintendent.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
All right. Well, thank you and welcome all. First on our agenda is our Consent Agenda A. We have received warrants in the minutes of the meeting from August 6th and August 20th. I entertain a motion to move Consent Agenda A.
To second.
Moved by Tammy, seconded by Jack. All those in favor of Consent Agenda A say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Beautiful. Public forum? Nothing. School committee, nothing. We'll move on to the report of the Superintendent, Dr. DeFalco.
Excellent. Thanks, Ms. Reggio. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see all of you. We, my first item on my report this evening is to give an update on school reopening and our school reopening plans. Some of you might hear that and think, oh, boy, again, here we go. Because I know we've been doing a lot of updates lately, but I will make this very brief and concise. I would like to start by, you know, really giving a big shout out to our staff. I'm not sure if everyone has really had a chance to see the news as of late. And, you know, just kind of the push and pull that's going on in a lot of places regarding reopening schools. I'm really proud to say that while things are certainly not perfect here by any sense, everyone's working really hard to get them as good as they can be. And that includes all of our faculty. We are, just concluded day seven of staff development. And I will tell you, having had, having had the opportunity to visit every school, to attend a variety of PD sessions, both virtually and in person, because we do have this kind of blend, although all of our staff are here in our buildings. Our faculty is really doing a great job. Very focused, very engaged, really collaborating, helping to problem solve, troubleshoot issues that have come up. I am just really, really proud. I'd expect nothing less. They have, you know, continued to deliver. And I just want to say thank you to all of our staff. We've had very informal conversations with all of our different faculty groups. We've had very formal conversations with them, as recent as today. Mr. Ernworth and I met with custodians, administrative assistants, our kindergarten paras. And, you know, we just, we have had multiple, multiple conversations, you know, continuing to move the work forward and prepare for next Wednesday, which, it was really great today, visiting one of our schools and popping into classrooms and talking with teachers. And the feeling in the climate was the same in each room, which was, we can't wait to have the kids back. We're actually starting to get really excited now. You know, this is becoming more and more real each day. So I just want to share that with the community, because I know that they may not always hear that information. And you read a lot of things in the news and you see posts on social media. But I will tell you, being up to my eyes and ears in the work every day, our staff are coming in, they're super committed, they're working as hard as they can to make sure that we have the best experience possible for our kids. But, you know, again, is the work perfect? Nope. But, you know, we certainly are trying really hard. So I just want to thank our faculty for that. As you know, we had a big information release on Tuesday, and that was really important for all of our families and students. You know, being able to share cohort groups and busing and, you know, who's my homeroom teacher and, you know, who's the, which team am I on? And I understand that that also brought a lot of questions and some confusion. We made some errors on our end, even though we checked those cohort lists so many times, my goodness, we still screwed up. So, you know, we had some siblings in different cohorts, and I certainly do apologize for that. But I can tell you, we had our leadership team meeting repeatedly and our administrative assistants, looking at cohort groups and bus lists. It's, it's quite a lift. It really is quite a heavy lift to get all of that in place. So we do apologize for those families where we did make a couple of errors. And I know the middle school schedules were a little confusing on top of all of that, because traditionally, they have purple and gold teams, which makes sense. Those are our colors. But we also had purple and gold cohorts that were assigned to buses. And so it was, it was possible you had a child that's on the purple team, but they're in the gold cohort because of busing. So I want to say right up front that we certainly, I do apologize for that, too. While there may not have been any errors, per se, I think it was confusing on that end, how you had a student, you know, that was purple here, but gold there. And so, again, just a big thank you to our families, just, you know, for cooperating and being patient with us as we worked through some of those details. As you can imagine, having a full remote option, a full in-person option for K to three, and then a hybrid option for four through 12 with bus, you know, busing limitations and different cohorts, it was just a lot to pull together. But I think we've worked out most of the kinks, which is great for now, but just want to say thank you to our families for that. And please keep outreach-ing. Questions, things you're confused about, things that don't make sense. I had a parent email me the other day and said, you know, I'd really appreciate an update on what's going on with school. When are we starting? And I thought, ah, when do I start with that? You're right. So even if you're not necessarily plugged in and you're not sure what's happening, no question is a bad question. Make sure to put it out there and ask any, myself or any member of our team. We will do our best to make sure we're getting back to people as quickly as possible.
It's September 16th, if anybody's wondering.
September 16th. Thank you, Jane. Absolutely. The students will be back on Wednesday. So also, Mr. Ernworth has sent out a technology survey to our remote families. So if he could, please do make sure, if you're listening and tuning in and you are a family that is in a full remote option, please do give us your feedback. We're just checking one last time on who needs a device. So we just want to make sure that we're taking care of the remote-only families first as we're waiting for the technology backup that everyone's facing, to be frank. It isn't just us, but with Chromebooks. And so we will be working diligently to make sure that our families that are full remote get the technology they need so our students can start on Wednesday. A couple of other just quick updates. First, food services. We're very pleased to be sharing with folks this evening, you may have heard already, but formally, that we did receive the extended waiver for no-cost breakfast and lunch to all of our students. So we're really, really happy about that. So we have a plan in place where we have, of course, the total number of students that are going to be in the building every day. And that's at 100% of attendance, meaning that nobody's out, you know, out sick or what have you. And so our food service department is working to ensure that we have enough to feed all students. Should that be what families want to do, right? So we don't really know yet. We're not sure what our in-person food consumption will look like. So we're going to make sure we're prepared for every family wanting to take advantage of that, at least for the first few weeks, and then kind of see from there how it plays out. But to our families listening, if not preparing lunch or, you know, breakfast for your family is something that would help take a little stress off, you don't need to worry about that. We will continue to-
And that's breakfast and lunch?
Yep. They can grab a breakfast and they can grab a lunch at no charge. So we're really pleased to be able to offer that. Mr. Ernworth, do you want to add in something in there?
I did. Thanks for noticing.
Sure.
I just wanted to jump in and say that there, if I missed that, I apologize. There will be food provided for seven days a week.
Oh, yeah. I haven't got to that part yet, but, yeah, that's okay. No worries.
So how are they getting it for the weekends? They'll take it home on Friday? Or, no? Yeah, they won't be Friday.
So when they come in, when, when students come in, if they are in for a remote session, they'll be, they'll leave with a package for five days' worth of food for breakfast and lunch. And then if they are fully remote, they can pick up, at the center, which will be at the middle school site, they can pick up seven days' worth of food. So we'll have the kids that are coming in, getting their meals in the, in the buildings. We'll have students that are in the buildings going off to their remote sessions, bringing food home for five days' worth of breakfast and lunch. And we will have the students that are fully remote being able to get seven days' worth of meals.
That's amazing. That's wonderful.
The five days covers the weekend.
Absolutely.
Five days covers the weekend. And I will say now, to try to make sure that the public is aware, we're getting confirmation. So I'm about 99.8% sure. Again, like this summer, this is not just for students in the district. This is for people in the community that are aged zero to 21. So if there's any families that are not necessarily in the district, but they have a need to get, to get this service for food, please, like I said, 99.9% sure. Maureen Douglas was on a call this afternoon, so she'll confirm that, but we want to get it to everybody.
And the pickup for, so children who are in, or students who are in the hybrid, you know, they can take the food with them when they leave for their remote days. But for full remote families, there will be a pickup Wednesdays at the middle school cafeteria from 11 to 12, and then again from 4 to 5. And we'll blast this information out everywhere. We'll get it on Facebook and through email and, but just wanted to make sure to share that with folks this evening. Also, a really interesting new kind of ad that we've put in place for our food service. We were recipients of a grant that we had gone for, you know, it was essentially an entitlement, if you went for it, you got it, kind of thing. And so we, yesterday, gave out 120 boxes of fresh produce. We did it right here at the middle school. We're doing it again next week, yeah, from 4 to 5. So again, it's for the community, for folks who want it. We're happy to continue to be able to support.
And it, and for anyone in the community.
Yep.
And if anyone saw the box, Maureen posted it, but it, I mean, was a five-pound bag of potatoes, two things of carrots, some plums, some oranges, some apples, some lettuce, cucumber. I mean, it was just huge box of, of produce that you could just drive up to the middle school, put in your car.
There was one point Maureen was sharing, the line was down the driveway.
Wow.
Of, yeah, people coming to, to, to participate, so.
And there was plenty. There was still some today. So don't think like, you know, you don't have that opportunity. But having said all of that, if you're someone and you know you need to make your child's food, they don't, they don't have to take the meat.
That's right.
You can still make food and bring a lunchbox.
There's no obligation for that. Yep. It's just a service that we're providing to, again, try to relieve some of the stress and help the families where we can.
No further.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Oh. Just a few other quick updates. The Boys and Girls Club. So I've received a lot of questions from families about that. And we are very close to confirming with families. We had hundreds more folks interested than we could accommodate. We can only accommodate 80 total, which is 40 a day, because remember, we have to cohort the students. So I know that number is not a significantly large number, but it's the number that we can work with in order to ensure everybody's safety and health through that. And we'll reassess as we go. Maybe there'll be an opportunity to expand. We will be confirming with families between Friday and Monday. However, the service will not begin until the 21st, so a week from this Monday. And we'll be communicating directly with families about that. And the hours will be from 8 to 2. So it's not, certainly, again, it's not perfect, but at least we'll be able to, you know, put in place some additional support for families there. We will have one of our LPNs helping out over there and checking kids in in the morning, making sure they're with their right cohorts. We're finishing up interviews at the end of this week, tomorrow, for our partner teachers that will be working down there. We've got quite, quite a few applicants, which is great for four seats, four positions. So, you know, what we needed to do was get all the cohorting done first and get the bus schedules and class lists and all that needed to go out, because the cohorts actually will drive the student seats in the Boys and Girls Club, right? Because it's the opposite days when they're not in school. So we had to get that piece in place first. And so we are very close. We're confirming lists. We're actually doing that round in my office, and we'll be in touch with families between tomorrow and Monday, so.
Do you know how long, so how long will they have their spot? Do they sign up week to week, or is it a semester?
They're going to be in the spot for the semester. And, you know, we don't know what's going to happen, right? So we'll, and if families need, don't need that service any longer, for whatever reason, they just need to let us know.
Okay.
And then we'll make some adjustments from there.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. So we're nearing our, our planning work there, the end of our planning work. A couple of other quick things, just on staffing. Our SROs, we're happy to see that they are all in place. We do have four. We have one for each school. That is fully committed for the first 30 days to just working days during their shifts at our schools. So to address some of the concerns from before, Matt and I had a very productive conversation in meeting with all of the Blackstone SROs and Police Chief. They've been great, as has Chief Landry. We've already had a discussion with Chief Landry and our SRO from Millville, where we're following up again with Chief Landry, just to make sure that everything's still finalized and in place. But I know we're in good shape there, so we're very pleased with that. And can't thank them enough for their partnership. They've been really helpful. Our interviews for our additional adjustment counselors, our LPNs and partner teachers are all yielding some success. I know Ms. PG's been at the helm of our adjustment counselor interviews. Nurse Karen's been taking care of all of the work with our LPNs. We have a couple of finalists there, which we're excited about. And the principals and I have been interviewing the partner teachers. You'll see in your personnel update this evening, there's, there's quite a few there. So we've done really good work at trying to build up that base. And again, we're using, or at least the first half of the year, the grant that has been awarded to us from the Department of Ed for opening and startup costs, which was about $380,000. So that's how we're able to cover the cost for those. And I'm happy to go into that in more detail if you're, if you're interested in the financial end. We can get to Matt's report if you'd like. And then lastly, the tents. We ordered 16 tents, four for each school. Those are in. And they're being delivered, if they haven't already, to the schools. And I know I've seen a few already getting set up, which is great. So we'll be actually visiting each of the campuses with the SRO that's assigned, so just so they can get a sense of where the tents are going to be and where they're located to the entry points and exit points. And, you know, we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page and understands, you know, just essentially the flow of how things are going to operate and work. And early next week, just the last piece of this, we will be walking our buildings with our boards of health and making sure that they are comfortable with the setup and the layout, although we sent out the video links to everybody in terms of the tours so the community could see just how the school would kind of operate and what it would look like and feel like the best we could. We will still do one kind of final walkthrough with the boards of health to make sure that everybody's comfortable and on the same page before we open with our, we're open for our That's all I have on reopening. I don't know if there are any questions on that before we shift to athletics?
Just about the nurses. Did we end up with all, all the new nurses for each building?
So actually Karen and I were just talking about that. So she has, we've got two LPNs that are finalists, right? We were looking for four.
Okay.
There's a couple more in the queue, I think, that just actually put their applications in. And I believe we have one or two finalists for the high school nurse position that will fill Karen's for the year, while she's in her, in her role.
Thank you.
So we're like, very close, yeah. A lot of hiring, a lot of interviewing. Any other questions on that?
Anyone else?
Nope. Great. So I'm going to actually ask Mr. Dudik if you could come on up and join us. Why don't we actually, if it's okay with the committee, if we could do the advanced placement stuff first, because the PowerPoint's up and you've got the handout, and then we can shift to athletics, if that's okay?
Sure.
Perfectly fine.
Is that okay?
Yep. Do you need the hard copy?
I've got, yeah, I went through it with Mike and I'm good.
All right. Good evening, everybody.
Hi, Mike.
So just to kind of share off with, with Dr. DeFalco, in terms of just all the planning and the PD, you've never had 10 days of professional development to plan for. It's been a long, you know, seven days, but extremely productive. You know, I'm always thinking about the momentum. You know, we're in it for a little bit. Are we still moving in the right direction? What's the energy flow look like? And I will say, you know, we've built in a few things that everyone is just, they know, they understand this is what we're doing. So we have a mindfulness break. We also have a connections activity to build, and that's part of modeling what we're looking for, our teachers to do with our students. But we just added a Q and A, sort of open forum Q and A to sort of ease anxiety and talk about all the different scenarios. And today, I just, I felt just amazed with just the energy level. We were, you know, again, I'm looking at flow. You know, this is a time for people to sort of say, this is a tiring process. We've been talking about this for, for days or months, or whatever the case is. But people just had so many different ideas and propositions that it was just, it was great to hear, you know, from how are we doing attendance, to looking at different apps, to how are we teaching and learning, how are we connecting with families in a different way? So I have three guiding questions that I've been asking on a pretty regular basis, looking at how are we developing critical thinking skills in our lesson planning, how are we building relationships and looking at the SEL piece, but then looking at partnerships with, with, with our families. And those are three guiding principles that, you know, when we are planning and prepping, that's our, our super focused in on that, whether it's independent or department-wise. But I just wanted to share that, because I, today, I just, I felt, you know, we've had our good days, we've had our bad days. You know, we're coming in with smiles and maybe not so many sometimes. Today, I was just smiling just across at, at 2:30. I'm like, wow, we're still, we're still in it. They got it. The energy's going, so I just wanted to share that. In terms of AP, I know it seems like it was a long time ago, but I just wanted to present a quick presentation for you in terms of our AP results. Again, for me, you know, I'm, I'm always proud and happy to share things that our, our students are doing and, and also our teachers. And I think there's a lot for us to be able to celebrate. I always put this in here for my AP presentation, but it's not what you do, but how you do it. And again, you know, when we look at the successes of our students or what the goals are, we're always looking to push our students to do more than they feel that they can do. AP is one way of doing that. It's not the, the only way, but I think it's one way to really push the rigor in getting students to understand what the level, what the next level may look like. So again, I have this in here for those people that don't know, but advanced placement defined, it's a university, to me, it's equivalent to a university freshman course. It's a national exam that students are taking at the end of the year. It was different this year. I'll talk a little bit about that, but it's a one to five scale. If you score three or higher, you have potential to get college credit. I say potential, because not every college will take it. Most state schools will. But it's, it's, that's the proficiency or passing rate when we get to three. And then it allows you to compete for college admissions with students across the country. It's sort of a norm, because everyone's taking that same test. This year, it was a little different. You know, again, our school year sort of got cut short in terms of in-person. Students were, were logging in as much as they could for remote learning. College Board still continued to have the tests or the exam occur, but it wasn't a two, three-hour exam. It was a 45-minute exam. It was take-home, essentially. It was at-home, online. And, you know, it was essentially sort of an honor system, but they, they used it, they wanted to still continue with that, and they use those scores for college credit. So again, these are just some goals from Mass Insight. We have a partnership, there's a grant, we're in year two, that we renewed, but we're talking about looking at how do we increase participation for everyone, or getting greater participation, looking at increasing our performance to get to our threes and fours and fives, and then increasing college success. So looking at a summary, I know it looks, you know, it's a little small on the screen, but you have that, I believe, at page three. You have just an AP score, a summary of AP scores overall in, on the, the bottom part of that. So we had 126 exams that were, were taken, 73 AP students. I will talk about a little bit that, you know, the participation rate was a little lower than it has been in the last couple of years. That's something that we're, we're going to be looking at from a guidance standpoint, and how do we increase and push that a little bit more. But I think part of potentially why it was a little lower is that there was a little more choice with electives, and students were choosing to take other courses rather than, than going into the AP route. But that's something that I think we definitely need to look at from a counseling standpoint of how do we continue to increase our AP or higher-level courses. You'll see all the courses, the summary, the number of exams that are in there. You'll see, you know, on that slide, that 2D art, there was one student, or drawing was three. You know, a lot, some of these smaller classes, Spanish language, that was an AP or, AP VHS course. So students do have the option of taking a VHS AP class, and they'll take the exam. The art, we had a smaller group, I think there were about six or seven. She cohorts them together, but they have various sort of themes behind it. But they did a really nice job this year, and I'll, I'll share those results with you in a minute. You can see the average score across the board. Some are better than others. Again, that's something that we are delving into, whether we're looking at curriculum revisions or scope and sequence, where students are, are getting essential topics and, you know, here, ninth grade year, so that they're being a little more prepared for certain classes. The AP score report, again, this is just another sample snapshot of, of what is out In our largest class was the English Language and Composition, and our students did, you know, pretty well there. I mean, you see that there's 13 students with threes, six at, six at fours, one at five. So that, you know, there's, there's, there's some that we got into their fives and some individuals that did a really nice job between threes and fours across the board. A five-year score summary, this is what I was mentioning in terms of our percentage of total AP students with three or, or higher. This, to me, I think is a positive. We had 68% of passing rate. I mean, that is far-
Amazing.
-higher than what we've had in the past. I do realize that our number is a little low. We had 73 students with the exams at 126, but we had, you know, we had 50 students with scores of three or higher. And that, that to me is a, is a really nice accomplishment from a teacher standpoint and the students in terms of that. So 68, and that's just a snapshot from, from 2016. A comparison, this is, I just wanted to share this, because I think this is really important. We have students that have a fee reduction for AP. We're looking at free and reduced populations. And you'll see here that these are students that did not receive a fee reduction. So we had 97 total exams. The mean score was 2.88, broken down into various sections. But what I found interesting, because we're always thinking about how do we close the gap, what do our demographics look like for us? The, the income level is, is a big, is a big difference for us. That's, that's a significant group that we, we always are looking for. And I'm proud to say that we had 29 students that received, or exams that were fee, a fee reduction, and they scored average a 3.24. So fee reduction, 3.24, non, 2.88. I know the samples are not equal, but I think that's a, that's a very good thing for us to be able to celebrate. In terms of strengths and areas of focus, I, when I looked at the AP reports in, I guess it was July, seems like it was already, you know, eight months ago, but it hasn't been. But this was, I shared this with Jason, eight months ago in terms of some areas of success. I think the percentage of three or higher from 47 to 68 is something for us to celebrate. I think it's a great thing. Students receiving a fee reduction scored higher than those that did not. It was a 3.24 to 2.88. Our AP Bio mean average in the last five years has increased, gradually increased in the last five years. We actually had two students score in the five, score fives. It's the first time, I think, we had more than just one in there. Our AP Lang, 2.63 last year, for the fall, the year previous, they increased to 3.04. And then this one, big jump, AP Lit, 1.8 was the average. That cohort, we jumped up to 3.38. So that was an increased mean average with those two. 71% passing rate in computer science. 71% passing rate in computer science. You see it 76 in English Language, 93% passing rate in World History. I mean, I don't know how you can get better than that with, with World History. To me, history is a tough exam. There's so many facts and figures. These kids were well-prepared, they were dedicated, so that was a great thing to look at. The areas of focus, we're always looking at that. What are, what are the areas for opportunity? Again, we need to look at why there was a drop in our enrollment. I think we have a couple of ideas, but that's something that I really need to, to get into with counselors and to try to push more students to, one, have confidence in themselves. You know, and I think some truly are pushing themselves and they take four or five AP classes. And others that I think can do it, but are just worried about how they would do or what their GPA or ranking will look like. I'd take a tier one schedule over anything else. You know, tier one to me is a higher level course and that's the goal. I just want students to be able to push themselves from CP to honors or honors to AP in one level, one content area. That to me is always a goal. AP Stats, Cal, Chem, mean scores, we're well below state average, so that's something that we need to be looking at. Clearly, there's something there that we, we need to truly analyze. And then closing, continuing efforts to close achievement gaps with enrollment and academic progress. I think that's just an area that, that I'd like to be able to work towards. That's just a quick AP presentation.
Danny?
Any questions?
Mike, what, what has been done from last year to this year as far as, you know, we don't have it here, but you know, looking back historically, there are certain, certain exams that the performance has been low year after year after year. Last year, when we talked about this, we talked about putting in some supports for either that, a specific teacher that teaches something or in a general area if more than one teacher is teaching that exam. So what, what was put into place this year? And, and I will say that this year obviously was just funky all around as far as the timing of COVID and the timing of the, the real push during AP. So I think everything's going to be wacky next year when we compare to this year as far as scores and the prep was obviously very different. But what, what happened from last year to this year? And, and what do you foresee is going to be put in place preparing for the next year? Because this upcoming year, our number may go down just because we're doing a totally different schedule and you're gonna not have the capacity to, a kid is not going to have the capacity to take enough, to take extra. You know, if you're doing it in half a semester, that's going to scare some people off. So I don't want to set you up for failure in increasing your number of AP exams for next year. Because I think it's not in your favor.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I think it's, it's a good question. I think it's a fair question. I think, you know, going from semester one or two and, and looking at that, I think we have some ideas of, of what we can do to prep students that are, have a semester two AP course or semester one. There's been a lot of dialogue with, with the teachers to talk about, you know, can we do a, a boot style camp? Or how do we get students enrolled in my AP and do a little more independent things? Can we create playlists for students? They're all, they're already talking about, can we have Saturday sessions to prep? Absolutely. I mean, that's been a go, that if we want to do Saturday sessions outside, we can do that. Mass Insight is, is committed to having quote, AP sessions, Saturday sessions, but they're doing it for a week. For one week and it's a virtual session, so we're not, we're not going over to Sutton or Grafton or hosting something, but we're going to be able to do that. But to your, your first question, I clearly remember that conversation because that was a, that was a difficult conversation with a couple of these courses. And I think we have to do a hard reset with some of these, truly look at what the curriculum's being offered at the, the lower levels and preparation. So I think that to me, I think is, is number one. We've had some hard conversations with some AP teachers to talk about, here are the results, what happened? What are we doing to move forward? And I will say that, you know, in terms of supports, you know, we've assigned AP mentors that are outside of the district that through Mass Insight. I've had teachers actually do observations at other schools that have veteran teachers. I've had them come into the building. We've marked up lesson plans to go and see what that would look like and, and what are the expected outcomes? And just have a, a general conversation about, you know, the lessons. I've always, in general, have heard good reviews from those teachers that needed additional supports. And they sort of questioned why I was looking for mentorships, but they understood where the, the grading piece came. So for me, you know, I'm looking at the micro, what's happening in the classroom and the curriculum? But I'm also need, now I need to look at that, that macro level of, well, let's look at what the math curriculum, nine through 12, or seven through 12, or wherever we want to start that, to look at certain things like statistics. Where are those being introduced? Is that introduced as soon as they get to AP Stats with no other stats level in there? I, I think we may be able to find something in holes and gaps that we can shore up with certain things like that. Unfortunately, we've had similar results in that, you know, in that content area.
And I think you bring up statistics and I think that's a course that's really important for some people, some of our kids going into specific majors. That's a key component to, to get there. And so I, you know, I hope that we figure that out whichever way. I mean, I think the steps that you mentioned are great ways to get there. But I, I do think that stats, you know, all of these are important in, depending on where you're going in your career. But I think stats kind of touches upon everything, so.
It does.
You know, it is part of common core, so we should be talking about some sort of stats prior to, you know, 12th grade AP stats. But I think that's when we dig a little deeper and see what our MCAS areas are and that, and such, so.
I agree. I think stats and other courses are sort of a capstone course. I mean, you'll see that anywhere and it'll build off. I mean, I was, I was a psych major taking stats and struggling through stats because I, I didn't experience. I mean, I took an AP Calc class in, in high school, but stats was a different level, you know? And I, I wish that I was embedded in. And to your point, I think stats is in various levels, but we need to do a deeper level of where truly, you know, where can we improve on being able to introduce that? You know, is it an entry level statistics course for ninth graders? Or that we're embedding more into Algebra I or Geometry class that has statistical analysis? I mean, that's something that I, I'd like to be able to go and push. But we do have Mass Insight as a support. Anytime I call, they have mentors that have been 20, 30 plus teach, you know, year veteran teachers that are more than welcome to come in.
Mike, the mentor, I'm sorry to interrupt. Mentor also did some coaching, right? Like real time in the classroom, live coaching with the, okay.
I mean, they were, they were co-teaching. They taught a lesson. I mean, we had various elements to that in terms of. Correct, yep, yep.
To address Tammy exactly what you're talking about.
And I just, I just want to point out, I am very impressed with the computer science. I know that's a newer one in our district. And I think to kind of get off, off the start with, with, you know, 12, guys, I'm doing the statistics here. With 12 scores, three and above on a class that's just starting to run, that's super impressive for me.
I'm hoping that we can keep those numbers. I mean, I'm looking at AP Stats or AP Computer Science, there's not a lot of interest right now. So people out there, computer science, some, some states make it a mandatory graduation requirement. I would love every single student in some way to take an honors computer science. We have an honors computer science and an AP computer science. And we have, we don't have a whole lot of interest right now.
I, I also think families don't have a sense of what AP really means. Like I think you've done a great phenomenal job selling it to the students, preparing the students, preparing the staff. But a, but a family member in this idea that it's a college level course, kind of like, oh, well, wait till you get to college. But at the same time, I don't think that people really understand its potential college level credit. So it's potential thousands of dollars. And to have 10% of the people, and I don't care that the numbers are lower or they still, that got a five, 11%, so above 10% got a five? I mean, that's phenomenal. That's countrywide, the best you can do. Like you can't do any better than that. And that's, that generally will get you college credit anywhere, provided the school has that course you got the five in or similar. And that's phenomenal. I mean, like that's, that's cream of the crop. That's scholarship money, that's, you know, credit money. And I don't think families, families really get that.
I, I agree. And it's, it's being able to showcase that a little bit more. I mean, and it's just, I think it's the personal stories. I mean, I've had students tell me, you know what? Thank you for pushing me. You know, I wanted to get out of Mr. Rose AP Calc class. It was just too tough. And, and they'll say, you know what? The first half of semester one calc class, I breezed through. It was easier than what I was getting at BMR. And like that, you know, that's a, that's a win for us. There was one person, probably about six years ago, who said he literally started Springfield College second semester. He had enough credits for one semester. I mean, some of us have kids in college. I don't yet, but that's a lot of money. Think about a whole semester.
A lot of money.
And then if you take an additional class a semester, hey, you might be able to graduate within three years. They don't want to tell you that, but you can. I mean, what is that, 45,000 bucks?
There you go.
Two classes, two classes saved me $18,500.
There you go.
There you go. Like those are the stories we have to hear and, and push with, with students that are saying, you know what? It's only high school, I'll get this in college or, you know, I mean, I think it prepares students, but it's also, there's, there's, there's money behind that as well. And an opportunity to take some courses that truly interest you. I mean, I took a poetry class. It's not something I was interested in, but I took it because I didn't get a three in AP English. So it's something to think about.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Anything else on APs?
On that, anyone?
Okay.
We can shift to athletics if that's all right.
Yep.
We'll just wait for Jesse to queue us up here.
Thanks, Jesse.
This is, this information is, is literally hot off the presses. I mean, as of today, because Mr. Dudik has some very exciting news to share with everyone before we jump into our presentation. So I'll let him share that. Again, also hot off the press.
Okay. So, so I'm trying to keep myself apprised to the updates of athletics. It's a difficult thing to do. It's a difficult job, but, but we're doing it. But, but I think we actually officially appointed yesterday?
Today?
Today?
Last night at nine o'clock.
Last night. He's calling me and, can I have dinner? You know, it's eight o'clock, I want to have dinner. So, but we, we officially appointed an athletic director slash permanent sub for, for a combined role. His, the gentleman's name is Robert, I believe it's McNulty. I never had him actually pronounce it. But we have quality candidate and we had 76 people apply and interview, or apply. We interviewed, I believe there were seven. And we had a couple finalists actually come out to, to campus to see and hear what they were all about. Dr. DeFalco interviewed a couple of the finalists as well, because we did, we started with a virtual. And Robert McNulty had, you know, in terms of the checklist of everything that we're looking for, you know, having some AD experience, knowing the MIA rules, having been serving that, that role for quite some time, knowing and understanding, we're in COVID world, athletics. I mean, that was one of my first questions. Fill me in, as a principal, what do I need to know? He knew it all to that level. So, you know, Robert, we were going to have him come in today, but I said, well, you just started. So let's give you, let's give you some time. I'll, I'll showcase all your highlights. He doesn't know that we're doing it. But he, he had a, or he graduated from Johnson and Wales. He has a major in sports entertainment, events management. He's in our Masters of Ed program for sports management right now. He's also certified as an athletic administrator. He served two years as an athletic director at a private school out in Worcester. And prior to that, he's, he was in Windsocket in a larger school system as an assistant. It was more voluntary, but he, he wanted to get himself into that. He played various roles at Windsocket School Districts, but he was an assistant athletic director there. So he, he understands game management, he understands coaching philosophy, he understands how to build the program. He's passionate about what he does. I mean, it's clearly seen when he, he lists all the certificates or certifications that he has and courses. First aid certificate, registered athletic administrator. He went through the MIA Leadership Athletic Director Course. I actually received a reference from somebody that went through the program, but actually works for the MIAA. He has everything, you know, how can you promote participation workshop, building a student handbook, the liability of, of sports? So we felt like he could just come right in. It's a difficult position. He's coming in where we're, we're trying to get filled in with COVID and, and everything else. And actually, this presentation that I'm giving you, I modified what he gave me for what he think, or what he thought would be a good presentation for the fall, meet the coach or meet the AD presentation. He did this, he shared this with me right after the interview. And it was 18 slides and I modified some. I said, can I take this because I'm presenting today? He said, absolutely, take what you need. It's not perfect, but I think he did a job, you know, a, a nice, nice job there. So that's, that's Robert. I'm sure you'll meet him soon. He's ready to go. I mean, he's, he's in tomorrow and he's, he's going through PD and going through all the documents and, and figuring out how we start fall sports safely.
If I could, Mike, just one thing, we, you know, our, our AD position here is, it's a tough one to recruit for because it's a stipend. And so we had to do some, you know, it worked out well. You know, he was looking for a subbing kind of role, so it actually, it was a good marriage. We could kind of bring those two pieces together. But yeah, it was just, it was, it's a tricky, tricky position to fill with that. But even with that, we still got quite a pool of candidates and both finalists were incredibly qualified. The other one was from the collegiate level actually, which was quite impressive. So we, you know, we had a really good pool to pull from.
What building is he subbing?
High school.
Again, I think to Jason's point, I think there was an opportunity. Unfortunately, there was a lot of people that were qualified that just got cut by just were happening and, and things were cut from, from that standpoint. And he's just, he's ready to, to, to get going and start and, you know, looking forward to, to working with him as well. So in terms of just a presentation, this is just a quick school committee update. I know we talked a lot about this, but this was, he shared this with me in terms of fall season, winter, spring. So the big changes is that, so essentially football, fall cheerleading and girls volleyball will be moved into fall season two. And cross-country, field hockey and, and soccer will be in the fall for this year. Nothing else has changed in terms of where things will happen, but we are working with the District Athletic Committee. They're trying to really leverage the work, looking at all the, you know, all the policies that we have in place and trying to do something that's going to be safe and a viable option. They felt that volleyball being an indoor sport, that if we could wait until February, that they felt that was a better option. A lot of schools went in, in that direction. Some were still keeping it, you know, in the fall, regular fall. But we felt like it was better from a cohort standpoint, because I'll show you what the pods look like. It's a little different structure. But those are just what the seasons look like. You'll see that there's extended, we're going till June 30th, clearly after, hopefully after we get out, right? So I think they were actually even looking into July to kind of extend and push. But this is what they had that was most up to date, that I believe. This is a geographic pod, so I have a pod that I received, sorry, pardon my notes, but I, I'm just writing a lot of notes and printing things. But right now, the central Massachusetts is splitting towns and districts into nine pods. We're part of the Douglas, Sutton, Milbury, Uxbridge, Bartlett and Oxford pod. So you'll notice that Nittmuck and Hope Dale and Whiteman Christian, that are league schools, are not in our pod. They looked at the geographic pods in terms of, you know, proximity and, and looking to see, you know, how do we not extend ourselves borderwise so that we're not playing schools out in Worcester or Townsend or, you know, wherever. so that we're not playing schools out in Worcester, or Townsend, or, you know, wherever else? So, this is what they were looking at in terms of what that was. So, that's not going to be a traditional schedule. It's not a DVC schedule. There's no state tournaments that are going to be happening. We're just looking to get kids to play sports and get out there on the fields and the courts. Most likely, we're not going to be at eighteen to twenty games in a season that we typically have. It might be ten to twelve. And then we're trying to limit in terms of transportation. Looking at busing, we're limiting to twenty-five individuals on a bus. I know in the DVC, I was part of the AD conversation, talking about how does that work? If we're offering JV and varsity, are we now doubling our transportation? And these are all little things that we're talking about. But, you know, people have mentioned, you know, do we have families drive students? If we schedule games on a Saturday, does that alleviate the transportation? I haven't delved into that at all with, with Dr. Super, Dr. DeFalco yet. But it's just, these are all pieces that we're talking about. Another piece that we, we mentioned is crowd control. You know, how many, how many parents and students can show up to a soccer game? So, we, we'll talk about that in one second. But how will fall sports operate? So, every sport's adjusted to the EEA guidelines. Mr. Ducharme had a better knowledge of that when we did our five to six. But soccer is going to look completely different. Kids are not going to be going into one another. They're not going to be able to tackle. They're not throwing balls in. I don't believe there's corner kicks. There's no headers. Field hockey, it's going to be a seven v. seven. It's a different sport.
It's like a race with a soccer ball.
Okay, yeah.
That's what it sounds like.
With a soccer ball, yeah. You know, field hockey, seven v. seven, and I think they're limiting the exposure that kids have. Cross-country, guess what? We're wearing masks. You want to run for two point seven miles or hour along the courses, you're wearing a mask the entire time.
I do it at the gym every morning.
Remember that. You got to model that.
Very difficult.
So, I know you, I, I heard you say, you know, you run around with no mask.
Outside.
Outside, okay, yeah. So, that is just something that we're looking at. Practices will be shortened, so we'll have shortened practices, and it'll be on a limited basis. You can't have multiple teams or multiple sports on one field. You know, sometimes we had girls varsity and boys varsity soccer on the same field together. We're going to have to limit that. I believe it's an hour and a half limited practice. I think we're starting off with smaller groups. There's a lot. There's just a lot going on. First practice or first day of tryouts is September eighteenth. That's the goal. It's at Friday. First day of competition is the second. And generally, there will be two competitions per week, with the exception of, of cross-country where we get to one. I think football may be different. Well, we're not even talking about football because that's in.
That's fall two.
That's fall two. So, I'm glad I'm not doing that right now, or bringing it up.
It's ice, ice.
Very warm.
Interesting. There it is.
So, in terms of a weekly schedule, again, athletics will be modified weekly for each team to have maximum five days of practice and competition. It would be a max of an hour and a half. It would be staggered. It would be staggered in, in some way, and it'll only be one field at a time. What safety?
Karen, did you have something?
I, I, yeah. How are they handling the purple cards for the physicals? Because is he having everyone turn in a physical, or?
I think that, that's, the details will have to work out.
Okay.
He started today. So, I didn't get the purple cards with him yet.
Yeah, because they're supposed to have that before tryout, so.
I think there were some modifications that they talked about with medical. Like, people, they're understanding that families can't, that, that, that there's no slots available for physicians. So, I think they added, I think, two additional months. I think it's a fourteen month period.
Yeah, there's new terms and new deadline dates.
But just a few things that, that are in there in terms of spectators must be masked. We're looking at being ten feet apart. Medical kits will be given. PPE supplies will be given. Hand sanitizer and wipes we're going to provide to all the coaches and making sure that we're, we're following the guidelines there. Water bottles, we're not sharing anything, so we don't have a, you know, what am I asking, looking for? What's the word?
Cooler.
Cooler of water and sharing, and we're looking for. Gatorade jug, so we're, we're trying to limit that. Building access. You know, we're looking at having porta, porta jons outside, so if students are looking to use restroom facilities, we don't, we didn't typically have that for spring and fall, but that'll be out there as well. And then building access, we're going to limit the building access piece. In terms of spectators, I think the big piece right now that people are really talking about is limiting athletic events to fifty total spectators. So, like, with the DVC and local governing bodies, what they're thinking about is, and this is for home and away teams, so if we have Sutton coming, we need to go and figure out how are we going to do crowd control, if we can only have fifty, fifty total people there. So, the thought through the DVC athletics, and this is just initial conversation, is that we're getting lanyards or passes, giving one to each athlete, and athletes are choosing who are they giving it to. Ideally, a parent. You know, a lot of people have two parents at home. There's going to be a choice. Kids want to go to a game. They're not going to be able to game, go to a game in terms of that. So, I mean, there's a lot. But, yeah, but there's, there's a lot that's going on. You know, some, some districts are saying, well, we need to look at that a little differently. We need to, you know, think about how are we going to go control crowds that are coming? Is that the AD role? Is that an SRO? Is that, who, who's, who's controlling masks ten feet apart and not having more than fifty people, you know, home and away visitors coming onto a campus? Those are all the things that they're talking about, and, you know.
So, I guess, I guess, you know, I joke, I joke that families are going to have fights in their house. But, you know, I guess, I think that we've asked families to do a lot and to, to look at things a little bit differently, but this is one of those deals that you have to balance, do you want your child to have the experience and play even though you might not see? It's their experience. It's their ability to play. It's their ability to, to be on a team and know what it's like to be on a team, and it, and we have to ask families to respect that. I mean, I, I can see the, you know, headlines now and the arguments over the, well, I'm just going to go and sit on the rock over, you know, a hundred feet away. They can't stop me. But I think if we want the kids to have the experience of playing, we have to ask the hard, tough questions of the families to say, just let them play. He may not get to see it. He may not get to experience it, but they'll have their, their games because I, I envision anger.
I'm hoping all these things are relaxed before lacrosse season. It's my only season left as a high school sports parent, so.
And I, I would say, you know, I think a lot of districts are following these, these guidelines. I think the ADs are working together. They're in their pods and they're, you know, again, some districts are saying, we can't control it, so we're just not having crowds. We're closing the campus down. To, to, to your point, it's, these are for the athletes. So, if they want to play, they can. I think there's ways of, you know, and we have plenty of video. We have opportunities to go post things on YouTube or live stream. I'm just throwing that idea out there. I haven't had that conversation yet, but I think there's ways to do it. You know, to, to still experience it without truly experiencing it. So, that, that's just something I think has been a big thing in terms of spectators. He, he wanted me to mention that as well. Fall registration, we're going to be looking at the typical family ID online registration. We're saying must be registered by the fourteenth. I think the family ID link is, has been up, has been there. I'm not sure how many reminders folks have been able to get that. We'll be able to, we'll be able to do that, you know, quicker than, than before to make sure. Physicals, it says thirteen months to the day. I, I'm not sure if that's completely accurate. I heard fourteen, but we, but I think there's some leniency. So, it's not, it's a one year. It may be, do you have a physical within the year? And you can use that for the entire season. At one point, it was like, okay, well, your, your, your physical ended on October first. If you don't have one on the second, you're not playing. So, I think we have to look at what that was. The concussion testing and then stand main, state mandated awareness information and brochures. These are all things that folks can do online. This will share out. Just other, a few things, concussion awareness, having those links, the fees in terms of sports. That's something that we could, we can discuss. But the, the piece that I asked them is, how are we going to get this information out? You know, are we going to do a typical fall night, you know, meet the coaches night? And I think what we're going to look to do is get all this information out online, have some Zoom or hangout sessions, meet the teach, meet the, meet the coaches and the AD, go through that process, and make sure that students know and understand what the regulations are. You know, I'm, I'm even pushing, maybe on the first day of tryouts, we're not out in the fields. We're in a classroom or somewhere on a field, talking about all the mandates and making sure that we're following policies, because what I don't want is what we always did. Because it's just, it won't work in, in having the practices. I need people to know and understand what they are before we send out our students and the coaches out on a field or, or on a court. So, that, then what can parents do? I thought this was, this is a nice piece, is be role models and embrace the change. I think what, what we're saying earlier today, be patient and supportive. Being ambassadors for our town and our school. Be healthcare workers. Check temperatures, hold athletes home, inform the coach in terms of symptoms. Don't attend games yourselves if you're feeling under the weather. Become members of booster organizations. These are just some pieces that we felt. You know, again, we're looking at, how do we partner, partners in education? And this is out on the fields. This is after school. This is in community events. Those are things that we thought would be helpful for people. There's some frequently asked questions. I could share this out to the community as well. But when is registration for fall open? It's now, it's open now till the fourteenth. Does, is there a postseason tournament? Unfortunately, there isn't. We're not competing for a district or state championship. It's just, it'll extend into a season, and then, you know, winter's not going to happen. And then, you know, it'll be a domino effect. Player, coaches, if they test positive, so we'll have to look at school and local, yeah, sorry.
Should the fees be adjusted if there aren't going to be?
I'm sorry?
Sorry, I mumble.
No?
The fees, should they be adjusted if it's a shortened season, or?
I'm going to, I'm going to leave that to the, the powers that are in front of me. I, you know, that is.
That's us. That's us.
I mean, that's something.
Throw that right back at me.
I, I will say, I will add, you know, we need to still think about volleyball and football right now because there, there is an opportunity for, I think it's the last one. Actually, it's a second question. I think there's something about out of season coaching or practicing. Is that true? That's always been a big no. What they're saying is that they're being a little more flexible so that teams like volleyball, football, you know, they're giving them something that they can still do now. And some of our coaches are asking me, can we still practice, you know, following guidelines? So, a volleyball coach wants to get into the gym and practice and, and work out and still keep, keep it as normal as possible, but not compete until February. So, those are all, that's something that we have to think about and consider as well.
Mike, sorry to cut you off.
No problem.
I definitely can say now that we have a new athletics director, I think that's something that I can work on with him to take a look at what the, what the budget is for the current program and see if it's possible to make adjustments to the current fee schedule. Because a, a large piece of it, I believe, is transportation.
Huge piece of it, transportation.
Not traveling to as many games. That could have a significant impact. And then, of course, the officials that have to be at all of the games, and if that's lightened as well. So, that's definitely something that we have budgets from years past, and I can work with the new athletics director to do some comparison and see what we can do about that.
Good idea.
But I, but I think for this, this fall season where people have to be signed up by Monday.
Well, I mean.
Fees the fee.
We're saying Monday, yeah.
Yeah, Monday-ish.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Your first slide said, high schoolers. Are middle schoolers still being allowed? Like, who did cross-country?
That's a great question.
Or did field hockey, or is it strictly high school?
Do you want to talk with them, Mike?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, we've been talking.
So, so, you know, I was, I was talking to Jason a little bit, and I've outreach the, like, for soccer. We were looking at the middle school league that we committed to and looking at cross-country with middle schoolers. So, I was connected to, I think it was the Milford AD that may be running a little bit of that. And these are towns like Hopkinton and Millis, Milford, you know, other schools, Mendon Upton are part of that. It's not looking good. It's, from a middle school standpoint, JV may not be even available. I think they're just looking to get teams out there. I will say, I think there is a potential for a cross-country middle school because we have right now, based off of what I just saw and screenshots and Google Docs, we have four schools that are committed to still doing middle school cross-country. I believe King Philip was part of that. It was us, Milford, maybe Whitemanville Christian. So, there's four where we could still run some meets. I think the middle school soccer league, I think we had two commitments out of the seven or eight schools. So, realistically, I think that's a conversation.
We're going to have to look and see.
It's not very fun.
If they're running it and we can do it, I think we'll try to find a way, but if it's.
But I, I did say, we're committed. BMR's committed. If we have opportunities to play, even if it's six to eight games or matches. It's something. It's just trying to find districts that are saying.
They'll do it.
You know, we'll, we'll do it. And right now, a lot of them have said.
No.
No.
Carrie?
Mike, what about for the sports like field hockey, where it's a JV varsity team? Will we have a waiver in place where seventh and eighth graders can try out to make the varsity level? Field hockey hasn't had a waiver.
Yeah, we've never, I don't know if we've done a wa, we, we always have to do a waiver to have middle school play on the JV squad.
Field hockey has a co-op, so I don't know that you would waive, right?
We do have a co-op with Douglas right now.
Right.
I think the other piece that we're going to have to look at is, you know, we could potentially, I think we had maybe last year a couple middle school to play at varsity because we did like an emergency waiver, but now that it's a seven v. seven, you're not putting eleven out there. It's seven total. I don't, I don't know how the MIA will take that. But, you know, at least the JV field hockey, there's a commitment still that, as far as I know. Conversation could be JV soccer if we want to do that, or are we looking at trying to pluck some schools, maybe even some private schools that are around that want to still play? I, I want the kids out there, you know, as much as we, we can safely do that. Unfortunately, you know, looking at it, I think they're looking at high school varsity level, you know, as priority one through the MIA, and then everything's sort of weeded, but, yeah.
Mike, I think it's going to be super important that we put out the, the revised rules of each sport because having a, a child who plays club-level lacrosse, they, you know, at that level, they've said that they've modified the rules, and then when we get there, it's just like a regular lacrosse game. And so, my guess is that high school is going to have to be a little stricter because we have a lot more people overlooking what we do. And so, people really need to understand that no heading means no head. Because, I mean, the things that you said made me laugh because I'm trying to picture a boy soccer game with all, all of those things, and I, I'm not sure what I'm going to see. But I, I think that the club levels are not following those same guidelines, so, for those kids.
That's my fear is, day one, if we're getting kids out there, it can't be the new, it's, it can't be what we've always done. It just, it can't. So, you know, I think that's going to be the weak point is if we're getting out there, we're not following the guidelines. But I think to your point, we'll have to get that out. I also, there's, it's like, it's a extensive document on this. We could maybe get some summary.
Wait till you hear, has anybody heard the new electronic whistles yet? Because they can't blow a whistle?
Oh, yeah. It's crazy.
They're pretty bad.
Well, I mean, there was a rule where I heard, and I don't know how accurate this is, but soccer players have to be wearing their mask, but if they're in full sprints and they're six feet away from one another, they could take the mask off.
Yeah, so it's gator, so it's a gator uniform, and you can pull it down.
How do you control that? How, how do you, I don't, I don't know.
You pull out a tape measure and you go, whoop, five feet, electronic whistle.
But, I mean, those, those are things that people are talking about and trying to read into it. But I think, you know, we're catching up to, to knowing and understanding. It's an everyday process, and there's committees, subcommittees specifically looking at that. And luckily, they're, they're sharing all this information out to, to districts. Now, it's, you know, my job or Rob's job to get that out there to the community and make sure that we get that out there. So, anything else?
Welcome to Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you for this information for him.
No problem.
Mike, thanks so much.
No problem.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll share out the, the PowerPoint, too.
That'd be great.
If you need it. Okay.
And last item on my report is an update from Nurse Karen on our revisions to our COVID-19 handbook. So, if you want to share.
Tom, you're joining us, too?
She's not this evening, no.
Oh, okay. I'm not sure I, I, is the stuff there because?
Yeah, they have, they have a copy in there.
Do you need a copy?
That would be great.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, so in the appendix, under the table of contents, the bathroom, elevator, those will both be deleted and will be shared by the building principals. Flu clinic, the title had changes and transitions will also be deleted. For cafeteria, all the schools have figured out how to have the kids be in the calf. The elementary are also setting up the gyms with desks for the kids to eat so that the children will not be eating in the classrooms. For cleaning of the desks, the desks will be cleaned nightly by the custodial staff. For the middle and high school, when there is a change in class, paper has been purchased to cover the desk so that the students will not be putting their belongings on the desk itself. Everything will be on that paper.
It's like a butcher block paper. They'll rip it on the desk.
Has it been decided whether they're reusing that from class to class or if it's just for a one and done?
I think the student's taking it with them to the next.
Yeah, I believe they're going to try to keep it as best as they can.
Trying to cover their space.
And if one class fills up their butcher block paper, they can get another slice.
Yep.
Got to be creative.
Yeah, yeah. I'm telling you, some.
Instead of three ring binders, the kids will be bringing home handfuls of butcher block paper.
I'm telling you, some business that wants to advertise could have made a bundle just by making paper placemats.
Yeah, desk scraps or something. Actually, some of the teachers are excited about that because the kids can write right on the, like right on. Have you ever been to like a big conference and you take notes like right on the desk?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, it was the idea from them, I think, if I remember correctly.
It's multifunction.
Yeah.
So on page nine, with science courses and lab work, equipment, there was just a typo there, so that was corrected. No other changes. For, on pages 10, 11, and 13, for COVID-19 exposure or positive tests, I added in the link for where test sites are located and that they may require pre-screening, referrals, Since all students are required to wear a mask, which is above the DESI guidelines of grades two and up, we no longer needed the line about pre-K to one, first grade. If someone has a positive test, the CDC has changed the requirements from being home for three days following with no fever or no use of fever-reducing medications to 24 hours. DESI is updating that on all of their guidance. The Zoom call that I was on today said that, you know, in the next few days, all of their documents will say 24 hours rather than the three days. Again, 24 hours instead of three days. In the middle and high school section, there was just some, oh, they've changed from 10, DESI changed from 10 to 15 minutes for close contact to 15 minutes. So that was deleted. The, under entry dismissal on page 16, again, that page is deleted and there is a YouTube link for the COVID setup and procedures at individual schools. For face coverings, our favorite. In a couple of school committee meetings ago, instead of will bring a bag, it was changed to may. So I reflected that in the protocol. And instead of, initially, it was written double or triple layer and changed that to multi-layer and I added in solid weave because we don't want an open weave mask. For mask breaks, I added in when authorized by staff and that breaks will be teacher-staff Again, same thing for the face coverings. Under the flu clinic immunization requirements, the state, since this was initially done, it came out with the requirement that all students need to have the influenza immunization. So I added language to that effect.
Karen, can you just clarify, what's the date on that? I keep hearing different dates. By what?
Yep. So for documentation for all the other immunizations, that's been extended to 60 days after school starts. So that documentation needs to be in on November 15th. For the flu vaccine, that needs to be in by December 31st. So any student coming into the district starting January 1st needs to have that documentation to be able to, to start school.
Thank you.
Under health office visits, another link was added for notifying the nurse. And there was on page 27, in addition to a template for a letter for the healthcare provider if you're symptomatic, I also added one if you're close contact. DESI changed what they consider a fever for the purposes of COVID to 100.0 degrees Fahrenheit. So ours had previously been 103, so any place that it was listed as 103 has now been changed to 100.0. On page 30, we added in proof of a negative test in there because we need to know if, if the testing is negative, they have the, a doctor's note with the alternative diagnosis and show the proof of the negative test. They've also, for students in the medical waiting room on page 35, students will need to wear a surgical mask in the medical waiting room rather than just their cloth face coverings. So we will be providing those students that come in to the medical waiting room with a surgical mask. More temperature. Recession on page 45, that has been deleted.
So it's been deleted from the handbook saying, I just want to, I don't, recess has not been deleted.
That line was, yeah. Building specific procedures.
The guidelines will be released by the principals.
Yeah. We have recessed.
All the, all the building-specific stuff will be released and will not be in the On page 47, under sick child or staff, we took out not due to other known cough, just because, you know, like I have asthma. So if my asthma cough starts, I can't just say that's my asthma cough. I need to go get a COVID test so that I know it's not COVID and work with my doctor to make sure that he feels it is my asthma. So I think it just clarifies what.
And is that, so I, I have some friends that have been in this situation already and their doctors are like, listen, we have it documented for three years. You don't need a COVID test unless you have 26 symptoms. And so I, I'm just wondering, like, what happens if your doctor is saying that, you know, I don't want that to stop the education from a kid because my school nurse and my, my person that has a doctor in front of their name is disagreeing. And I think, I worry about that.
Because there are a lot of doctors that are not COVID testing until, you know, multiple situations are happening.
Unfortunately, the guidelines released say that, you know, even if you follow the ones for a probable case, if you have cough, shortness of breath, difficulty breathing, those are all reasons to have a COVID test. So I think that, you know, either myself or the building school nurses will need to have those communications with physicians that don't want to have these children tested.
They're definitely out there. I think we're definitely going to experience that.
And, you know, and it's, it's hard because so many of these symptoms could be many different things and probably, you know, 9.9 times it's going to be something other than COVID, especially in this area where we've been able to have, you know, pretty good control about it. But we can't assume that because it's similar to other symptoms that we may have had in the past, that it's not COVID. And the doctors can't either.
But they are. So I'm just saying, and like I said, you being a nurse and I respect that, but they're a doctor.
Yep.
They're a little, you know, it's.
No, I, I understand.
But Tammy and I understand where you're coming from, but they're also responsible to follow the guidelines set by the state. So, so if the doctor says, no, I'm not authorizing the test and the guidelines say if you have a cough, you get a test or you get it with a doctor's note, then you're home for 10 days.
So this is the new DESI, this is DESI, this, taking this out?
No, it, well, DESI doesn't have that listed there. We did and they just say cough.
Okay.
Both DESI and CDC just say cough with nothing, no kind of clarifiers or, or anything. Just a straight cough.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Again, on page 48, it's now 24 hours instead of three days. And on the parent guardian agreement, they had announced the mobile rapid response unit. So since the parents are going to be signing that form anyways, if you're under 18, you need a parent or guardian signature to participate, should we have a cluster and qualify for the mobile rapid response unit. So I added in where they can just sign twice on the same sheet of paper and then we don't have an additional paper, you know, with another signature. It's, it's all right there. And we have those signatures well in advance of, which hopefully we will not have a cluster, but should it happen, we are set and we know our kids can be tested.
Are we?
Go ahead.
Allowing people to opt out on that? What happens if a parent doesn't want them to participate?
If they don't want them tested, then, then they don't have to. But, you know, for, for the ease of it, it's all on one form.
So you're asking if we don't want to, if a parent doesn't want their child tested for COVID?
Because it's bound to happen.
Even with symptoms and it would look like they have it, they don't want them tested?
You never know. I'm just saying like.
I just wanted to.
They need to sign this before they can come into school.
Well, they, they need to sign the community. They need to sign the agreement that they're going to be checking and not send their child in with that stuff, so.
Okay.
Right, but some of it does say, like, if you choose not to be tested, you just have to quarantine.
Yep.
So this, I think, falls into that. Like they could choose to opt out of this, but just quarantine.
Okay.
The mobile rapid response unit, that is for asymptomatic students that are not known close contacts. So if there was a cluster in the school and, you know, you're in another classroom, you're not symptomatic, those people would qualify for the testing. If you're symptomatic or a close contact, then the testing needs to be done by your healthcare provider or one of like the stop the spread sites.
Okay.
So it's just for the asymptomatic. But no, they, they certainly don't have to. And that is it. Any questions?
I have two.
Yep.
I don't know if these Karen or Jason. So I know, especially, I overheard yesterday when they were doing the Facebook Live, if a child is homesick for a day, they said, no, they're not going to join a remote class. When the kids are quarantined, I'm pretty sure we said they will join a remote class. Is that still the case? So if someone has to quarantine for 14 days?
Yes, they have an opportunity to continue to learn. I mean, that's assuming they're not really sick, you know.
Right, if they're healthy enough to attend.
Yeah.
Even if they're just quarantining, maybe not even sick or maybe they're sick but healthy.
Yeah.
So they'd be set up with a remote level class.
If they're sick, it's like a sick day. They take a sick day.
Right.
If they're quarantined because it's in the house or it's in the whatever, but they're asymptomatic or perfectly healthy, but they have to stay home 14 days, they join the remote.
They do. And I'm just thinking of Sarah's example. That's like the, you know, with the parent who the child's really, you know, sick, but they don't want to test, so we don't really know, so they have to stay home, but they're not well enough to, to go on to a virtual class and they would need to, they would need to do that. But otherwise, we put them in a remote class.
And then I want to just vocalize, reiterate, this wording is gators are allowed, but we believe that multi-layer solid weave face coverings provide more protection. However, kids can wear gators. It doesn't say no gators.
So, so this is our handbook.
Right.
Our policies, in our dress code policies.
I didn't bring it.
We created a, the mask, students on all grade levels, so all grade levels, must wear a mask that completely covers the nose and mouth.
And that gator does.
And a gator does.
Right, okay.
But a bandana, not necessarily.
They can't do bandanas.
No.
Because they're open.
Because they're open.
I just know there was some gator conversation, so I just wanted to see if we can, can we just clarify that gators are not, that they are allowed.
So in the protocol, because I haven't seen the written policy, I'd like to add in here that bandanas are not allowed, just so that that is clear. Because I, the fact that. Because I, the fact that there's no snug fit around the chin is a big issue.
That's how I feel about face shields. When you go to a restaurant and the waitress has a face shield, I'm like, no, I want the other waitress. I don't want the one with the face shield.
All open here.
I agree.
Yeah, no, no one should be wearing a face shield without a mask, you know. It's for additional protection. It should not be used in lieu of a mask.
Wholeheartedly agree. So yes, I, does anybody have an issue with the, with the saying, no bandanas in the appendix, whatever we're calling that? No.
Any other questions?
But I, I do think we want to, multiple layers covered, under the chin, covered.
Snug on all sides.
Yep.
Preferably not a gaiter, but if you have to.
Yeah, we prefer not, clearly.
It's late in the game. People are going to school next week. I think parents avoid gaiters, I guess, as part of my thing. It's like, I think some, but I do, I see both sides, so.
They could wear the gaiter as a hippie.
I guess.
You can still wear your gaiter.
I wish, I guess, I guess my position on this, and I respect the fact, I too went out and bought all kinds of things for my boys who would start school next week.
Right.
And I had to go back and buy different stuff. So I say that with, with a sense of humility and respect, but I also, you know, I guess I wish we had like a more definitive ruling because I, I don't want, out of a, you know, out of a matter of convenience, us to set children up or staff up to not be as healthy as they could be, right? So I, you know, it's some protection, but is it the best and, you know, I guess that's where.
Does multi-layer take a gaiter off the table? I mean, are they multi-layered? Are there, there are some.
I don't know. Yeah, maybe they're.
Yeah, there, there are some. A lot of them are single layer. If you do double the gaiter, then it, it does provide, you know, adequate protection.
Yeah.
I just think we need to be very clear as soon as.
I think you're right.
Today.
No, I think you're right.
So what do we do? Give people a candle and?
Who's testing? Who's looking at the?
They blow tests on the paper and see what's.
No, I think that's, you're not supposed to do that.
Yeah, we don't want people blowing extra air.
That's true. Well, maybe to help parents with that. Do the tissue.
Yeah, and, and maybe we do put that responsibility on the parents to say, this is not only about the safety of your children, it's about the safety of everybody who's walking into the school. And if your child can put that gaiter on and they can blow out a candle or they can make the paper move, you know, a single piece of loose, loose leaf paper or Kleenex or a tissue, and they can, and that thing moves, that's not a mask they should be going to school in.
Yep.
I do agree with Jason, though, that the more definitive we can be, the better. I mean, I will be very clear, having worked in middle schools for many, many years. As soon as one person comes in with something and they think it's cool and it's trendy, then every single person is going to want.
Can I, absolutely to that point, Matt, and if I could ask a question. We bought twenty-four thousand face masks.
Right.
So, I mean, can't we just give them, I'm just thinking of like, if the parent went out and got a different, could we just provide them with, it's, it just looks like mats, except it's white, or actually looks a lot like terrorists. But, you know, is there a way to just issue, we, we have thousands of them. We had to buy before we could even open.
I think that, I think from a parent's standpoint, and we were kind of chatting about this before the meeting, I think some people are using the gaiter because they don't want the mask to touch the desk. They don't want the mask to fall on the floor. They don't want, like, there's a lot of things that can make your mask a lot less safe that the gaiter responds to that, those concerns. And one of them is putting it on the table or dropping it on the floor or whatever, whatever a little kid is going to do with it.
That makes sense.
But a physician would argue pulling it down on your neck, just put everything that was bad on the face mask onto your neck. But, so, so unfortunately.
Where is the mask? You can touch back here and not contaminate yourself.
You know, unfortunately, there's, there's a lot of projection about what could or might happen, and there's not a lot of scientific study in this area. I mean, there really isn't. And so I, I agree that we have to define a policy, which we did, that says, mouth and nose, clearly covered, securely covered, whatever word we use. And then we have to have protocols that maybe define that further. And so that's what we have to do tonight, because I agree with Tara. Parents have continually asked, and we need to leave here tonight so everybody's very clear on what their child can walk through the door wearing.
Yeah, and I agree. It's just, I don't think that school administration will be able to enforce preferences.
Right.
So like you're saying, whichever way we decide, I think there should be something definitive.
So do you need a motion and then we discuss?
We can, sure, sure, if you have one.
Motion to prohibit gaiters? I don't know. I'm not good at making motions. I like them short and sweet. And I'd like, I'm taking one for the team on this, bringing this up, by the way.
All right. Well, anybody, does anyone want to second that?
Second.
Okay, so now we can have our discussion. So. Is, is the gaiter issue that it's not thick enough? I know that's not the only issue, the issue of pulling it down and there's germs that way, but.
Isn't it that if it's, if the virus is aerosol-born, then the gaiter is actually diffusing it more than?
So that's the piece that's not definitive.
Right.
Because the only gaiter that was tested was one.
But in that study from Duke, they were using a fleece material, which most people are not going to be walking around the school wearing a fleece gaiter. And.
No, they're going to be using like a nylon one, which arguably would be less effective than fleece.
Not that I'm a, not a fabric scientist, but.
But they, they, they did, you know, say that there are issues because the whole country went off on that study. So there are issues with that study and their findings as far as the gaiters go. But having said that, I do not believe personally that they offer the best protection unless they are multi-layered.
Yep. So I do have, in the minutes, we have a copy of what was in the handbook. Just, and you've said it, so I just wanted to confirm. A face covering that fully covers the nose and mouth must be worn by all individuals in school buildings, on school grounds, and transportation unless authorized by a school official. So just to clarify, that's the wording in the handbook as far as cover the nose and mouth.
That's the policy. That's the policy, right?
This was handbook, I thought. Is it policy?
No, that's policy. Yeah, you're reading the policies. Yep.
And both the CDC and DPH have not had any position on types of face masks, so.
Jane, I'm wondering, is, is there any other, so the Duke study is the one that gets cited often. Are there others? Does anyone know of there?
So, so I did, my, you know, went to the Google, but did research, did translate some things from other countries to try to read. There's a study that was done in nineteen, in two thousand seventeen with the SARS, when, with some other stuff. And they're just really, like, gaiters are not something people test, like, they're just, they're.
Not a lot of research, Mommy.
There's none. There's none other than the Duke, and the only reason they studied it in the Duke study was because there was one sitting on the desk and they said, hey, let's try that. So, you know, kind of oops. So there really isn't a lot on gaiters, but there is a lot on materials and essentially cotton materials that are, are double-layered seem to provide the best catch of aerosol, whatever, droplets. What's the word? Yeah.
Droplets, yeah. It, it, or aerosol covers both the droplets and the smaller airborne particles.
So should that be the conversation?
Well, so, yeah, so, you know, because somebody's going to argue, here's, people are going to argue that the openings on the side, you know, if your mask is too big or the, are, are bigger than, than any opening that, that a gaiter's going to be. It's whether or not the air can get through the material.
That's what I'm wondering if we should, so parents that got them, maybe they have the double layer and it's fine, you know.
Or you wear them, like she suggested, that you double it.
Or you wear it up.
And you fold it. The gaiter's long. You pull it up and you have to get it folded down. Then he has two layers.
Can I ask, all, all of the masks are double-layered, correct?
All of what masks? The ones you bought?
The ones we bought.
This one I am not. This one is not.
And homemade ones might not, yeah.
That's the question. I mean, if, if it was conclusive that all masks were double-layered, then I would say stick with just masks because it's confirmed they're double-layered. Because what also becomes difficult to enforce or really to check is, do you have two layers on that gaiter or two layers on that mask?
That's what I'm saying.
Stop kids in the hallway and say, breathe on me, you know, breathe on my hand. So.
So all masks are not double-layered.
Right. I, I, I think personally, if you have a face covering, let's focus on teaching and learning. Let's not worry. I mean, I don't think we can be, who, who is the face, I mean, we're going to call a parent and say.
The face police?
Yeah, like, I, I mean, we, we don't even want to do that for the dress code when body parts are showing when they're not supposed to. And so I think you just, we're going to get into this, the minutia of it, and we, we want kids here. We, we want them here as much as possible. We are getting our teachers here as much as possible. And I think if, if everything is covered, you know, when you're not wearing the Madonna mesh fishnet mask that is happening somewhere, I think, you know, we're, we're better than not having a mask. And I, I think we should, I'm okay with that. If a gaiter is going to get a kid to school to learn, then I think we're in a better place than when he's not.
Yeah, and my other concern is with some of the special populations, that if that is the only thing that they can wear, it's going to provide more than if they're not wearing anything.
Right. And they would have an exception made regardless for those kids anyway, right?
We'd be working with, you know, joking, talking bad about, you know, working with those kids. But, you know, but if, if someone, if it's a choice that either they're not going to wear one or they'll, they'll wear a gaiter, I would rather see them wearing the gaiter and I'm guessing that, you know, our sped teachers would too.
Yes.
But it's, it's tough because, you know, you're right, you can't police and, you know, check if everything is.
No, and the minute you ask me to take it off to see if I've got another layer under here, then.
You just ruined the whole thing.
So I, I guess I'm very comfortable with our, with our guidelines that say, you know, our policy that says you have to wear a mask, it has to completely cover your nose and, and mouth, and our policy that say we prefer a double-layer, you know, traditional mask, I don't know what you, but, you know, wear two gaiters. I don't know. You bought gaiters, wear two gaiters.
So I'm not going to prohibit gaiters. I'm going to amend my motion to say you have to wear two. At least.
So, so, yeah, I mean, you could make a motion that says, you know, that.
Multi-layer.
Does it already say multi-layer in there? Doesn't it already, it already says multi-layer. I mean, I, I don't, I have concerns about enforcement too, but, I mean.
And everything with COVID is fluid. So if we're finding that the mask policy is not working, then, you know, we revisit it.
Yeah, I agree.
Where did the name come from?
Gator?
I just wondered. I didn't even know what it was when somebody first mentioned it, do you have a gator? I said like an alegator? Like, what does that mean?
I signed that one to play Nerf like a year ago.
It's a, it's a ski, it's from skiers. It's a ski thing that, you know, they, they wore in the winter so the snow doesn't come down here.
Like a neck warmer?
You like a neck warmer.
I know.
Is it a name brand? I have a feeling.
I'm wondering if it is a name brand.
No, I don't think.
Google it, Karen.
Do it, Karen. Google.
I didn't know what that was.
Like a refrigerator.
Yeah, it started with skiers, you know, the, the ones that flip upside down, whatever you call them.
Motorcycle, right.
Motorcycle right now.
But I don't know whether, I don't think my parents call them gaiters.
You have to vote.
French for leg.
Yeah.
I'm Googling it too.
Comes from the French for leg.
Jack just knew that.
So, so. We, our, our procedure, protocol, whatever we want to call it, our handbook, COVID handbook addendum will say, multi-layered, what did it say, Karen? Multi-layered.
Multi-layer solid weave.
Multi-layered solid weave.
Provide more protection than gaiters over the bandanas.
Well, I'm, I'm going to say there's bandanas or gaiters and then bandanas are not, not permitted.
Yep.
Yep, so multi, double-layer your gaiter. Two gaiters are better than one.
The things you never thought you would say at a school committee meeting. Do you have to vote, Jane?
We have to.
Yeah, well, we have to vote on all the whole package.
Yeah, I can withdraw my.
Okay.
You want to withdraw it?
All right.
How do I, how do I do that?
You just withdraw.
I want to withdraw.
And who seconded it? Jack, are you okay?
Perfectly.
Perfectly, okay.
Thank you, Jack.
Withdraw. All right, so we have addendums to the addendums.
Oh, boy.
Oh, my God, can I entertain a motion to approve the amendments to the COVID handbook?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Tara, seconded by Sarah. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so, so Karen, you can rewrite. Thank you.
Thank you.
Or Tanya, I don't know, maybe Tanya, I don't know.
I, I will send Tanya the updates and, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
That concludes my report, Mr. Aaronworth.
All right, Mr. Aaronworth.
Good news and bad news. The good news is we've got financial reports again. I know it's been some time and people have missed them. The bad news is they're not really that exciting today. As it is still the beginning of the year and things are still panning out with respect to income, the revenue streams that we have, especially the grant revenue streams. And likewise, the expenses have been charged to the most appropriate accounts, and there are certain things that may still need to be adjusted as we're moving into this COVID-19 spending pattern.
Spree.
And we've had to purchase a lot of things upfront. There may be certain items that have been purchased under a line specifically noting, we're going to move that at some point. So for starters, the total revenue report. A couple of things that you can note in it are that both Blackstone and Millville have paid their first assessment, which is terrific, which means they're in a comfortable spot, making sure that we're moving forward with our approved budget. And the first chapter seventy state aid payment did come in, in full. So as discussed, it did come in as expected. We're receiving the charter school reimbursements and we did start getting in some grant funding, but the grant funding is minimal. As you may recall, from the beginning of the year, they usually release a small initial payment and then they start the process of drawing down as needed. So we will hopefully, in the October report, see some more consistent revenue streams from all of those. Are there any questions regarding the?
No, but do we have any money for Magda Mine glasses? No.
I can put that under a COVID. I apologize.
Wait until the next page, it's even worse.
I'm getting back into the reports, so I'll have to make sure that I adjust, I adjust the sizes.
And just based on a little bit of our earlier conversation about athletics, we might not be collecting that whole amount that's anticipated either, right?
Correct, but to that point, we probably won't be spending that entire report.
Right.
A lot of those.
Well, and we may not, and music too, because they won't be traveling too many places.
And those are, those are the revolving funds.
Yeah.
So they really don't impact our budget tremendously. And we can always, if there's funds that have been collected and not necessarily applied, they can stay, they can stay there. Which is, I believe, some of what has happened toward the end of FY twenty.
Yeah.
So there will be some, there will be some additional funding for. So there will be some, there will be some additional funding for, for programs. With respect to the expenditure report, which is your next report, again, there are certain expenses that are going to need to be reclassified. If you were to stroll right down to the bottom line and see that in the current available balance, there's $5,776,000, that's not accurate right now. Unfortunately.
Yeah.
That number, I mean, we really need to do some adjustments with respect to some of the staffing encumbrances. There are people that still aren't hired. And there are also, again, there's costs that need, we've been allocating some of the COVID-19 costs just to a specific COVID-19 line. And they may not be in here. And I can say, we must, we definitely have spent and encumbered over $100,000 in COVID expenses.
Gotcha.
The hope is that those will be reimbursed through FEMA or covered by certain, certain grants. That being said, the FEMA reimbursements could take a significant amount of time to, to see. Dr. DeFalco and I did discuss earlier that for the October meeting at the latest, I will put together a better analysis of the specific COVID expenses that we've had and the funding streams that we have coming in for those COVID expenses.
You can lay all that out.
Yeah. It's just, it's a little premature to have that report now because a lot of the revenue sources haven't even begun coming in. We're still submitting the grants. We haven't gotten initial payments. And we're still sadly racking up the costs that haven't been assigned to the appropriate account lines yet.
Matt, can I add one thing to that? And I just, I just want to remind the committee of this because I think, I think it bears repeating. I know we've said it before, but we're, we are still operating on the notion that we're in a 10% reduction of state aid.
Right, right.
Because we, even though, because the numbers came out so late and they've only level funded us for a quarter. So, you know, so that's good news in terms of some of these overages and things we're going to talk about in a few minutes that will, that will help. But just to get a sense, you know, we're, we're talking for, for the first quarter, approximately $360,000. So that's, you know, that's a positive when we're talking about all these expenses that we weren't anticipating. But, you know, at some point, we're going to have to have a conversation. If, if we will be level funded for the year, what are the priorities and what do we want to separate back and move them forward with that? Because we certainly don't want to carry that for the year. But again, we don't know. We have no idea what the long-term fiscal picture is going to be from the state.
Nope.
And we don't want to find out in February that, oh, you know, sorry, everyone, we actually have to reduce by 5%, 10%, whatever.
We certainly don't want to be making any, for any reductions mid-year as Dr. DeFalco mentioned.
So we're being very conservative from that, just so folks know, you know.
I try to, I try to have a conservative approach to my budgeting and reporting always. I, I think it's the safest, I think it's the safest way. But Jason and I have discussed, there's a certain level of conservative versus we want to make sure that we're spending money appropriately to make sure that our, that our kids are getting what they need. The services are there.
And that's part of the, if I could, Matt, you know, a lot of the questions have been asked publicly, which I know you've all heard, but, you know, the additional positions, that's great, you're bringing them on, but what if we need them past the first, you know, 60 to 90 days? So, you know, as we, as we continue to look forward, in the first quarter, we have, you know, additional state aid of 350, $60,000 that we weren't anticipating. Well, that's what essentially is costing us to have these folks onboard the first half of the year. So we feel reasonably confident that if we need them till the end of the school year, we can make up that difference in a quarter. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So like that, just so folks kind of have an understanding where that's coming from, so.
So to the actual expense report, as Dr. DeFalco mentioned, you will see some overages, like where the current available balance is relatively high. So for example, well, I'll start at the top.
The superintendent's office?
Well, that's, that's a negative.
I haven't bought anything, so he's buying stuff and charging it to me.
Well, actually, I will tell you.
I don't know what that is.
I, I do know what that is. And again, I had the opportunity to run the report. We got it out a couple of days ago and I, I was able to delve a little more deeply into the expenses. It's been a bit busy with all of the COVID stuff going on. But in that line, it's actually, there is a position that's being charged to that line that's in the wrong, it's being charged to the wrong line.
Gotcha.
So that, that actually, the human resource specialist.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Was being charged to that line because they initially were a fill-in for the executive assistant to Dr. DeFalco. And then the payments have just remained on that line, so we'll make adjustments and that should, that should change. The other, I'll go through the red ones that might jump out. The other red one that might jump out is custodial services. I'll have to take a deeper look at that, but that could be, given, given the current situation and the materials that have been purchased and a lot of the equipment. Again, that is an area where I anticipate that we will have, we will go over what we budgeted. But we're going to attribute as many of those expenses as we can to the, to the grants that we receive and then apply for reimbursement, which I have heard takes possibly a year and a half.
Wow.
So FY '23 could be looking terrific.
If we make it there, Matt.
We'll make it there. And again, to, to Dr. DeFalco's point, if you were to start at the top and scroll down in the function codes and you can see the 2305 function code, which is our classroom teacher's regular education.
Oh, yeah.
And then right below them, our classroom teacher's special education, you're seeing tremendous amounts of overage where it's saying that we have plenty of money available. Part of that is currently accurate because of positions that we didn't refill. But as we move forward, we're going to be assessing this much more closely and deciding what we can do. I don't want to, I'm not going to go through every line at this point because as I said, it's very preliminary. Are there any questions about this at this time?
Anyone?
And just to remind folks, we had seven Unit A vacancies. We had four Unit C and we had four administrative, that's 11 positions, so, you know, to what Matt's talking about. That is, I mean, that's a significant number. But again, until we are confident on the revenue side of the house from the state, we want to make sure that we've got that right.
Right.
Because we know, as you've seen, and Matt will go over in a few minutes, the personnel report just to be received and, you know, placed on file, but there's a lot of folks on there for that, right? Now, we're paying for that with the grant and the towns have contributed $100,000 toward 10 of the long-term, the temporary long-term subs, which is fantastic. But, you know, be that as it may, we, you know, we want to make sure we have a plan in place.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So as you can see, the next report is the personnel changes. It was just brought to my attention by Jill that there are a couple of shifts already. So again, toward the beginning of the year, particularly before we've even started classes, that's the likelihood. So we have positions that may be in one spot, but an assistant may move or a teacher may end up working with a different grade level. But this will give you a good idea of what Dr. DeFalco was saying. We're trying to get as many people as we can to make sure we're filling the needs of the students.
So, and I don't know about anybody else, but I am thrilled to see the number of men listed on this sheet. Like I just think in terms of role models and putting people in front of students to see who they, they see, to have some gentlemen join the district is awesome.
To diversify the workforce from every angle, from race, ethnicity, gender. We really are trying to get.
We don't get that part, but we, I get the.
No, right. But a diverse group. We're working on it.
So I think that's awesome.
Are there any questions on the personnel report? If there are, I suppose it's more appropriate to just email me or shoot me a text or however you'd like to communicate. My last official report here is the facilities update. We have had a lot of stuff going on over between when we last, you know, ended the school year to now. So for the complex roof project, the roof project was completed. Yay. It's only been, from what I hear, long before I came, I think year three. There was additional work that was done. There were snow guards put in above the doorways and there was some flexible pipe fitting that was adjusted so that the same problems are less likely to happen again. And that did have some change orders associated with it, the cost. But all of that cost has been absorbed by the insurance payments. And I actually spoke to Lauren Taylor, the town accountant in Blackstone, and those payments are just getting put out, I think, this week. So that project is basically done. Central office was relocated. For those of you that do not know, not in this room, but for the public. We did move to 200 Lincoln Street at the complex and it's really coming together, quite frankly. We have the entire back section of the JFK side and it's, there's a separate entrance in the back. It is, the main entrance is where there is a drop-off in the morning. But the doors are being secured properly so that after the drop-off in the morning, the, the districts, the central offices will use that as our main entrance. And the doors to the right will not allow people to get access to the students. You will need a swipe card, so that'll be for teachers and administrators. And then in the back hallway, the same thing will happen. So that work is scheduled to happen on the 15th. All of the materials just came in. We've been working with Omega to make sure that the wiring is already there. So it should be all in place before the students come in. The one exception may be the glass panes that are in the doors. They did say that there's been a delay on those, given the whole COVID thing. And we may have, and you saw this at the JFK project, we may have either plywood or some plexiglass in those view areas just for a short time. But that work will be done outside of the school day.
And we, we did order all new signage too. So we'll have, you know, Blackstone, Millville, regional school system, administrative offices, like signs outside so people know, you know, where it is and.
Yeah. And the move went extremely well. We got it at a very good cost and we are all unpacked. And if you're, if you haven't visited already, it looks like offices. So the, at the high school, there have been some changes as well. Many of you may have noticed. The security vestibule was completed. It's, it, it looks great. All of the metal actually matches the original hardware from the building. So it, it really blends right in and it makes it extremely secure. There have been no problems with that. And the reason why central office was moved to make some more space for our nursing suite, that did have to have some work to make sure that it was up to, up to speed for what we needed. All of the car, not all of, a large part of the carpeting in that office suite was ripped out and put hard flooring in. And then the bathroom that was next door, that was a staff bathroom, is converted into a handicapped accessible bathroom that can be used by the nurses' suite. And I had this question with, this conversation with faculty this morning because somebody mentioned, wow, that's like almost the whole floor for the nurses' suite. That's impressive. It is due to the nature of having to have the isolation room and having to need that space. That being said, it was strategically planned so that all of that space is not going to remain in the nurses' suite. So there are parts that are still carpeted that are going to be main, main office areas. And eventually, the guidance, the guidance suite will be able to take over some of that space for additional SEL work and work with the students directly. So it, it, it had some, some good forethought. We've made it functional for now, but we've also kept it in a place where we can make the best of it.
But the nurse will, will stay there and not go back to the closeted area.
It's not, it's not that the entire suite will, will be absorbed.
Right.
But right now, given the isolation room and the, and the, all of the space in there, it's, it's, it's a very significant amount of space and we could pare a little bit of it back. No offense, Karen.
Yeah, no, no.
We could pare a little bit of it back to make sure that we get that to guidance. But it's, I heard, I have not been there since the floors were done. I heard it looks terrific.
Looks really nice.
The bathrooms are coming along as well.
Jane, the central office portion will stay the nurses' area. And then the superintendent's office will go to guidance once we no longer need the medical waiting room.
Gotcha.
Speaking of the bathrooms, there was another piece that is not on here was our bottling stations that we did receive that, I believe it was $40,000 grant from the Safe Water Initiative. We're having bottling stations put in. That has been pushed back. That's not going to be able to happen by the beginning of the school year. The, the fixtures were on back order and there again were issues with just the construction and, and getting those materials. But they will be put in as quickly as possible. And the Millville boiler project, Jane, thank you for being at that meeting with me the other evening. I'm happy to say that on the 8th, the license was approved for us to fill the propane tank. It would have been quite a tragedy if we had a propane boiler and we're not able to fill the tank with propane. But everything, and I thank, I thank the town for their assistance with getting the process moved forward and for their understanding of how, how the process needed to continue. It really was a very collaborative effort and, and again, I thank everyone that was involved. But the licensing is in order. The interior materials and the system is basically ready, ready for testing. The sheet here says that the tank is going to be going in on the 15th. I believe that was delayed. It is going to be going in a little later and we're hoping to get the tank filled closer to the end of the month. And hopefully that the, the testing of the, of the entire system will take place prior to the end of the month. And things will start being wrapped up by October. Christina is aware, their recess plans and their drop-off pickup plans have been developed around the submarine being there in that space.
And she said that on the Facebook Live yesterday. She was very clear.
We refer to the tank as a submarine.
It's huge.
It's pretty big. That is all for the Millville Boiler Project. Another project came up today at Millville. While we, while Dr. DeFalco and I were at another meeting, I got a call regarding the water pressure and the tank dropping to a very low level. Apparently, one of the underground pipes ruptured and is leaking. So I bring it up now, not to just surprise people, but to let people know. If you heard anything, currently, we're going to have to shift some of the professional development that's scheduled for tomorrow. That will be the only impact. So we already have it scheduled for repair to either take place tomorrow or Saturday. And I've checked with the repair, with the, with the water company, provided that the repairs take place and they're finished by Saturday, which they should be. The tank will have enough time, the pump will regenerate the level of water that's in the, in the tank. And we'll be able to make sure that we're starting up again for Monday for, for teachers to come in. Because I know we have had that issue where if there's not enough water level in the tank, it's not a, it's not a healthy situation in the building. But we should be okay for Monday. With that, the last project in the facilities update is the big one, which is our capital planning project. That has been moving along smoothly despite COVID. The, the company, DRA, has been able to get all of the blueprints and the designs from all of the buildings. They've assessed the mechanical systems. They, we got those surveys out. Thank you to everyone that participated in them and thank you to the school committee for taking part in that as well. And they've compiled the data. And now we have some reports that are in draft form. It's just a matter of administration getting the opportunity to meet with them, review the draft reports and then see what our next steps are going to be. It's been put a little bit on the back burner for the past couple of weeks. But the hope is still to have it move forward so that we can make sure that any capital, any capital requests that are of a timely nature that may come from this report. any capital requests that are of a timely nature that may come from this report, we can get out as soon as possible.
Yeah, we had said that we would share in one of our October meetings. If you remember way back in, I don't know, February or whenever it was, we ventured into this and so we're still on target for that.
We are on target.
Yep.
And that is the facilities report. I do have my, that last.
Well, you have, yeah, yeah.
Yep, so, I'm not sure how, I can kick this off. We do have the Servpro cleanup cost. So, we, as many people are aware, we had an urgent situation towards the, when we started trying to open after the buildings had been closed for so long and there was some lack of ventilation in the high school, which was new to that area. We did have issues with mold in the high school, in a couple of the, in one wing in the high school and we had two wings in the complex. All of that needed to be remediated. Then we had to have testing done and one room didn't pass the testing and we had that reclaimed and then it, it passed the testing. And all of those reports have been provided to the union. You know, Esther and I spoke through the entire process and she was aware of what was happening and I shared all of that information. The cost to clean this stuff up is pretty expensive. The initial, the initial bills that we got were approximately $207,000 for all of the work. Having worked with them in the past and having them, I should say, appealing to Servpro's understanding of what we were going through currently while we were trying to fix the building and get prepared to bring students back for COVID to school, it took me probably a month going back and forth with them, but they were able to reduce the bills by about $37,000. Not that the bill is insignificant, but it is still a $170,000 bill from them, but down from 207,000. So, it's all about an 18% savings that we were able to get. And, and I, I certainly had conversations that while we never want to engage with them again, like we said two years ago, their willingness to work with us is certainly an indication that we might turn to them in the future. And that's where things stand with Servpro. I believe the quest, the, the conversation is.
Where do we get the money?
Where do we want to take that money from, yeah. My recommendation, I, I don't, I mean, I, we have, we do still have E and D funds that we were planning on applying to offsetting the loss in the, in the revenue from the state. Again, I don't have an entirely clear picture of the state revenue, but we did, we did, right from the start, offset, I believe it was $300,000.
Right.
And then we applied potentially more. So, I think that given the level funding of Chapter 70 and that assurance that E and D would be the place to, to draw these funds, it's also, you know, it's also in line with what those funds are for.
Well, that's, I, that's.
It's a one-time expense.
And that's what I just wrote, you know, that's why they're there. It's unexpected, unexpected consequences and that's why you have E and D. That I just wrote down. Anybody have any comments, thoughts?
What would that leave us? Because we, we took something out of E and D earlier.
So, I would have to actually.
If it's earlier in this school year, but last year, but, so where would we be about?
I don't, to be honest, I don't have that number on the top of my head. We allocated a lot of E and D also to this year's budget.
Right.
That may not be necessary to keep in this year's budget. So, I just would need to go back and see where things, where things stand. If we applied everything, if we, I, I actually, for starters, I believe that E and D will get certified higher than.
You thought.
We had anticipated initially. So, if things were all moving as we planned and we needed to use the E and D to offset all of the losses from state revenue, we were still at over, over $300,000 in E and D at the end.
And that was with using.
That was with using everything that we had anticipated to use. And that was not with me feeling that we will come in with a higher estimate of E and D. So, maybe for, if we're around $400,000 after everything that we had originally anticipated, it would still leave us in a healthy position. But again, I believe it will be more than that.
Is that something we can wait to get all of that information before we vote? Or do we, like, we have to pay it?
Well, we have to pay a bill. The work's been done.
The bill will have to be paid.
Right.
If we choose to, if the committee chooses to wait to determine whether or not that funding comes from E and D, it could always be adjusted at a later time. But that just means that, that money would come from the money that was budgeted for repairs and for other building-based needs. It's all one pot of money in the end.
In the end, yeah.
So, it's really just what lines we're allocating them, them from, but.
And we're essentially just authorizing you to pay the bill. Essentially.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, gotta do it.
We gotta pay the bill. Works hard to get done.
Yeah. Couldn't not clean, couldn't not do it.
They did do a lot of work and they did it in an urgent manner.
Yeah, quickly, yeah.
And they did it quickly and it really came out, it came out very well. And the teachers were able to get into their buildings. And that was something that we focused on this year was I made sure that any of the tactics that they were using were going to be the least disruptive to the classrooms as possible. Because there were some concerns, and I discussed this with Esther, there were some concerns the last time that teachers' rooms were disheveled and things were out of place and covered and ruined and the teachers had almost no impact to their classrooms this time.
So, I will entertain a motion to pay it from E and D. Or not.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Move by Tara, second by Jack. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, good.
And that concludes my report.
Okay.
On such a high note.
On such a high note.
Thanks.
Does anyone, you know, other than the, "Good luck next Wednesday, have a great start to the school year, be kind, be nice," anybody have any comments, reports, things they need to, to discuss? We, Dr. DeFalco and I have been invited to the next Blackstone Board of Selectmen meeting. There seemed to have been some confusion there and Sarah, sorry, Sarah. I'm looking in one direction, you know, and Sarah, there seemed to be some confusion and I think we will resolve the confusion and hopefully have a Blackstone Special Town Meeting in the fall. And Millville's is October 3rd and our next meeting is September 24th. And, anything else?
When is the Millville FinCom to discuss the warrant items? Do you remember?
24th?
Aubrey sent that. Let me look.
Is it the same day as our?
That's the next, that's the next.
Maybe, maybe. Oh, ew, I don't know. I, I, I don't know.
It's coming, okay. I got it right here. It looks like, uh, yeah, it's the 24th.
At 7:00 PM, yep.
So, we could have a very quick school committee meeting.
Yep. Nothing like, Matt doesn't get to speak.
That was the opening. It was great. All right.
And you don't, the two of you don't, and you're not speaking into your microphone anyway, so we might as well quiet you down.
So, we could do a speedy.
Speedy, speedy meeting on the 24th.
We do have a RAC meeting on the 15th at 5:30.
Yep. That is next, is that next week?
Tuesday, Tuesday.
Yep, next Tuesday.
Zoom?
Zoom meeting.
I think so. I think there was a Zoom link.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, we scheduled it for Zoom and the link went out.
Not hybrid, it's just Zoom.
Not hybrid, just Zoom. We do have to have a discussion, though, about our meetings going into the future. We have decided to do them this, in this format, but we do have protocols that say visitors and guests and folks shouldn't be coming into the building. And we've told the PTAs and the PTOs and the PT-whatevers that they should have their meetings virtually. And so, not that we have lots of guests and people coming into the building, but we should have a conversation as a group around whether or not our meeting should be via Zoom or in person moving forward, now that the schools are occupied with students or will be. So, think about that.
Do we need to talk about it now?
What?
Now?
We can.
I mean, I'm comfortable with Zoom and if it's for the sake of solidarity and consistency.
We are. I mean, we're saying, you know, you can't come in unless you're escorted. You can't come in unless you have an appointment. You can't, a parent can't even drop stuff off for their kid other than the door. And yet, you know, our meetings are, have to be open, so.
Yeah. Back to Zoom.
Yeah, my concern, so my concern with Zoom is I think we all have a tendency to be a lot more remote. Like, I don't think we have the in-depth conversations that we have when we're here in person. Not that we all want to stay here two and a half hours. And I also don't think we get the involvement in other things that are, that might be going on that we all should take part in. So, I have that concern, but I also know that we are required by law to have open meetings and, so. What do you think, Jack?
I could do it anyway.
Do you have a preference?
I prefer being in person for things, generally. I get enough screen time for school. But it's not a question of health and safety for me either way, so I get my tests every week.
Oh, yeah, right. Anyone else?
I just want to echo what Jack said. It's not a matter of safety for me either. You know, and I, I think, and I, and I want to draw attention to that fact because I think when we, right before we started to come back live, there was some, you know, public conversation about, you know, our insecurity of coming live when really it wasn't that, you know. And so, I just want to clarify that we really want to be able to have a public forum in a way that people aren't jumping through hoops to be able to speak to us, even though, you know, the caution is that it is public forum and that we don't do, not every school committee becomes a Facebook Live session. And I think people are having a little bit of a hard time with that concept, that it's not a two-way conversation, discussion. And so, you know, I think as long as people realize that, but I, I'm happy to sit in this seat as well. But I, I do think it's important that the public be able to speak without, you know, jumping through the hoops that you have to in order to get in here at this point. So, I think Zoom works better. And I think we, we had pretty good attendance for those meetings, which, you know, we don't always have. I mean, it could be the fact that we're discussing whether kids were coming back to school or not, but, you know, I like to think that it was easier to participate.
If we were in, if we all did decide we want meetings in person, could we have it? Public is still only through like live stream or would we, because, I mean.
Yeah.
If we're like two people in the building, I get it, like, we're, you know, our policy is no visitors, then we'd really be.
Yeah, we talked, if we did that, we would need to have, once Scott comes and opens and closes the building, we'd have to probably have him stay a bit more to clean and disinfect and put everything back.
Do a deep clean.
Yeah. Which we can, by the way.
I think we're that way.
That's what we want to do.
I'm fine with either. I think Zoom makes more sense.
Okay.
Well, realistically, we'd probably have a setup for Zoom while we're here anyway because of capacity constraints. It can't really be an open meeting if you can't have anyone in town at times.
If you can have 10 people sitting there, right?
Yeah, so we'd have to have the setup either way, so it just depends on whether we should be here as well.
See, nobody's here.
No.
No offense. You guys have to be here.
Chill in your own little corner.
Actually, truly behind the.
To Jason's point, from a cost perspective, we will have to, we will have to have a custodian come in.
All right.
After, after this to clean up.
So, this is now a fiscal discussion. That's great. I like it.
It's not me to mention the money, but I'm just saying, it is, it is true because they will have to make sure that it's cleaned.
And ready to go, then they.
Sure.
Like, priority-wise, after the kids leave.
Right.
So that it can be set up and then it will have to be cleaned again.
Yep. That seems silly, then.
Zoom?
I mean, if we, if there is a meeting that warrants us coming in, we make an exception.
Budget season, we'll be in.
Right, we change as needed, but for the most part, go Zoom.
This is all going to be.
Yeah, let's try Zoom on the 24th, since we need to make it quick anyway. Let's try Zoom with live stream or whatever that's called. And then we'll, we'll decide meeting by meeting. How's that?
The FinCom meeting is a Zoom.
Zoom, it is, yeah, it's virtual.
So, yep, so we can zoom on, zoom in, zoom off.
We're gonna have both going at once.
Will someone send an invite and remind us?
Probably hard to go from here to zooming in because you've got to have your stuff like right here and then go then.
A day at school.
All right.
Tammy, did you say you needed something?
Enter, oh.
Somebody need something? I'm sorry, I thought Tammy said, can someone send me a something?
I, I said, will someone send us an invite so that we remember that we're not coming to this building? I don't know, I might need that.
I will take care of that.
Yeah, I think Jesse's still in there, so he usually.
Yeah, Jesse, did you hear that?
I'm a big fan of the Google Meet calendar thing.
I'm a Zoom, I'm a Zoom.
He's coming out to say yes. I can see you.
I'm gonna say you guys are nuts.
All right, Jesse heard.
Thumbs up.
All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Good, thanks.
All right.
Have a lovely evening. Good luck, no, seriously, no joke.